If we may bow, if I'll be cut down, thank you for the many visits. I ask that you guide and lead us in these teardrop times and always keep us reminded of thee that we may give you the glory and the honor. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Port, the council member Kibrovsky's mom passed away, and so we'd like to have a moment of silence for her. Thank you. This is our finance committee approval of minutes for November 2nd. Seconded, any questions or deletions about those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Two A and B, second.
Moved and seconded for two A and two B, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. I'm going to disband our finance committee meeting, and we will call to order county council for items one through three. Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of this meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Chairman, move for approval of two and three.
Second.
Two and three. Yes, sir. Moved and seconded for approval of two and three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. First one is recognition, recognize Bishop Johnson and ask you to come forward, Mr. Johnson, Reverend Bishop Johnson. The clerk will read a resolution, and Mr. Pryor will present it.
Bobby is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Darby.
No, no. Mr. Darby, I want to defer to you, even though that's my bishop, I'm going to defer to you.
That was my mistake.
10 years old and still going strong.
Is it permissible, sir, to ask the family to come up, sir?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Bishop Johnson, please come up, please.
101.
101 and going strong.
All the family members.
He is going strong.
Mm-hmm. If you want to bench Bill, you be your bench.
I read this. A resolution of Charleston County Council honoring Bishop Johnny James Johnson on the occasion of his 101st birthday. Whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson was the fifth son born of Jeff and Margaret Johnson on November 11th, 1923 in Somerton, South Carolina. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson and his family arrived in Berkeley County from Somerton, South Carolina when he was just 12 years old to share crop with Mr. P.O. Mead on the Marrington Plantation in Goose Creek, South Carolina. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson was drafted into World War II in the mid-1940s and served two years in the U.S. Navy where he embraced Christianity while on a ship in Hawaii. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson married Thelma Barnett in 1946, and together they had 11 children. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson attended trade school for masonry construction and began JCI Concrete Company, which his sons still run today. The company has completed concrete work for various commercial buildings, including Charleston Place Hotel, Charleston International Airport, Northwoods Mall, and Hilton Hotels, as well as hundreds of residential homes in the tri-county area. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson founded Calvary Church in 1947 and later became the bishop in the Church of God in Christ and served South Carolina from 1984 until 2022. And whereas Bishop Johnny James Johnson remains an active community pioneer and family man. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council, in honor of Veterans Day, does hereby recognize the many contributions of Bishop Johnny James Johnson to his family, his church, and his community, and wishes him a very happy 101st birthday. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman.
Well, thank you so very much. Bishop, just here, just a moment, please. World War II veteran, I think it was last week, two weeks ago, Bishop Johnson camping at North Charleston High School to lecture my GROTC students. So he is still active within the community. He still fishes, no one gets in his way. So it's so beautiful to have him here. We're not going to have him to stand long, but if one of the sons or who's ever would like to say something on his behalf, or even if the bishop is desirous of saying something.
Well, I'm just thankful that I'm here. The Lord promised us three scores and ten by the reason of strength we reached four scores. I don't make 21 years old, so I don't know how much longer I'll be able to stay. So I'm thankful to be here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so very much. And the clerk can prepare some. Then we go to the back, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
Marietta Kelly and the friends and family of Lieutenant Colonel Latonya Kelly, would y'all please come forward?
No, no, no. Mr. Darby, I'm not.
A resolution of.
Hey, how you doing?
Good to see you, brother. How y'all? Good to see y'all.
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you.
My peeps.
She used to really have the courthouse after he retired.
I'm placing both of them.
Yeah.
A resolution of Charleston County Council honoring the memory of United States Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Latonya Renee Kelly. Whereas Latonya R. Kelly was born in Charleston, South Carolina, on November 26, 1976, to Peter Kelly Jr. and Marietta M. Kelly. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly was the sister to Sharnice Kelly and Dawn Marie Kelly and aunt to Ashton Bailey. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly was a graduate of Goose Creek High School in 1994 and enlisted in the United States Air Force as an airman basic that same year. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly faithfully and bravely served her country for 28 years at posts in Texas, California, South Korea, Ohio, Charleston, Afghanistan, and Washington, D.C. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly earned several major awards and decorations, as well as a Bachelor of Science and Master of Business Administration during her time in the United States Air Force. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly retired on June 24th, 2022, as the United States Air Force Deputy Assistant Secretary for Cost and Economics stationed at the Air Force Financial Management and Comptroller Headquarters in Washington, D.C., where she was responsible for integrating over $110 billion in major defense acquisition programs budget into the Air Force Future Year Defense Plan. And whereas Latonya R. Kelly loved her country and family up until her untimely death on November 22nd, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council, in honor of Veterans Day, does hereby honor the memory of U.S. Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Latonya R. Kelly and adopts this resolution on behalf of a grateful community as a symbol of its appreciation for her honorable and faithful service. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman.
We get the passing of your daughter, and I know words are not in place to describe someone, particularly a child, but we are very appreciative of the services that she rendered to this nation. And if you are desirous of having a few words, please do, ma'am. This is mom.
And that's dad.
Where's dad?
And sister, come on.
Come on over, please.
Yes. Let me say a word.
You can go ahead.
We want to give thanks on the behalf of everyone coming out to share this time with my daughter, for my daughter. And if there's anything that we need, we'll get in touch with you about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please follow me, please. Would you please bring Bishop Johnson, please, if you would, to the sign here, please. You all please follow me, please. Yes.
I can tell Mr. Darby after the meet, yes.
On Prime or something?
He's catching through. I know he had to rewind and put on.
Put it on the TV unless.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Yeah, good to see you. Yeah, man. I know when she first came here, along with Foster, I remember when the old man Foster was there, he came here together. So Doran, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so Doran, the one brought him here. Yeah, he hired me. Yeah. They go back.
James came out of the line.
Yep, he was retired.
He was the police chief.
Yeah, Patrick, yep. He brought both of them here, and they used to come by the shop all the time.
You know, they say one time he pulled over a train at Patrick.
I wouldn't doubt it. I mean, he worked up and down, he couldn't do nothing, and he started right around. Yeah, but they used to, they used to be out on Rivers Avenue together, and he'd always stop by the shop, you know, get a drink or ask for coffee or something like that. Good people.
All right, everyone, we're going to disband county council, and we'll go to the Administrative Policy and Rules Committee chaired by Mr. Pryor.
Chairman, the committee members are Joe Boykin, Jenny Costa Honeycutt, and Colin Middleton. And I'm the chair, Teddy Pryor. We have two items. First item is approval of the minutes of December 7th, 2023.
Approved and seconded, any discussion?
Elution or addition? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Item number two is an amendment to our video conference with other council members talking about, you know, the video conference. I think it went well, it was a trial period, and so I think what we had to do is to make this permanent where we could do a video conference without any abuse, but if there's any abuse, this council can convene at any time, and that particular person could have that revoked. So that's what we have for somebody wants to say something, I make a motion, we open.
Yeah, Mr. Chair of this committee, I would simply like to say that this is consistent with our ability to effectively serve the entire constituencies of Charleston County. And certainly, we have experienced individuals who have used the electronic platforms in emergency situations and situations that were, that predicated their involvement. We didn't have to move agenda items off in order for councilperson to be present. They could be physically, they could be virtually present and participate, you know, wholly and fully. And so we've seen that happen. No one has taken advantage of it. No one is using that in lieu of coming to council meetings. And I think that, you know, just through the trial or pilot period, it has shown us that we have all been responsible. There should be no restrictions in the case that, you know, nobody seems to be using it in a way that would be abusive. And so this is a viable medium. Things can happen like we're experiencing now with our fellow councilperson and not knowing how long a person can be out. You can still come and be present and fully engage in the work.
Thank you, Reverend Middleton. Anybody else?
I'd be willing to make a motion to permit participation via video conference with no restrictions on the ability to vote. However, I just want to make sure that the chairman has to be physically present. Is that still?
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
Whoever's chairing the meeting has to be present, and a quorum has to be physically present.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I have a second. Let the record indicate that. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, y'all can't take a vote on this today?
No, no, no. I mean, we know.
Yeah, it's just a discussion. Yeah, so no, no motion.
Dr. Moody?
Thank you. I'm not on this committee, but and I agree, Reverend Middleton, I think it's okay. I mean, what's our current rule now? Is it three per year or two per year or something like that?
Two per year.
Okay. Does this also apply to our committee commissions and boards and all that? Will that flow? Do they set their own rules? I mean, I worry about.
I would ask that they set their own rules because, and then this is county council, and I don't want to force this on somebody else, so to let them, I would ask that they set their own rules, and we've, because, you know, they're appointed by us, and if we see where they abuse and stuff, then we can make change.
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Pryor, is it's got, you know.
We got to watch.
Yes, sir.
Everything with what Reverend Middleton said, I mean, this council.
Mr. Chairman.
We're here to show up and be counted, so thank you.
I think that it's worked well, and that we just, if anything comes up, we'll adjust it. I'm in favor, thank you.
All right. Let's be on the next agenda.
Just leave the door open, sorry.
Will this be on the next agenda? It will be on our next agenda, December 5th.
Okay, great.
Anything, sir?
Sure, I mean, listen, I think, I think everything that y'all said sounds appropriate to me. I don't really have significant concerns about folks on this body taking it seriously. I think to Councilman Moody's point, though, you know, it is something to monitor, and I wouldn't want. I just want to make sure that we can enforce some rules when it comes to committees and that sort of thing, so, commissions, I think I should say.
Thank you, and that concludes our Administrative Policy and Rules Committee agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Moody, would you handle public works?
Thank you, this planning public works, all members are on this committee. First item of business is the approval of the September 20, 19 minutes. Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Second, Mr. Pryor, any additions, corrections? All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Boykin.
I would move to approve two A and two B.
Second.
Mrs. Honeycutt, any discussion on the, I believe we noted last time, these were two voluntary down zones.
Yes.
So is there any discussion? Any need to see anything? All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, man, that was a quick one. Good one, Mr. Bray. Okay, I'm going to reconvene our finance committee meeting, consent agenda.
Move for approval. Items three A through D.
Second, second.
Moved and seconded items three A through three D. Is there any discussion about one of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Four A.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve four A. Is there any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Move for five A and B.
Second.
Move for approval, five A and B. Any discussion?
Thank you to Mrs. Durant and her team, they're squeezing every single penny they can out of this money, and that's fantastic. Thank you for that.
Right, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Move for approval, item six.
Second.
Six A. Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. We'll adjourn this finance committee meeting and go to public hearings. Our first public hearing is the Hamlin Beach Community Historic District.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on a request to designate the Hamlin Beach Community as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak?
Is there a hearing on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To make a presentation.
Oh, so we're going to actually get a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So as stated, this request is to designate the Hamlin Beach Community as a historic district on the Charleston County Historic Designation List. The applicant provided the following motto for the community, "Our faith is strong, our love is genuine, our heritage is everlasting." The applicant provided an introduction to the Hamlin Beach Community, which explains that the community was founded in 1881 when African-Americans were sold about 310 acres of land during the Reconstruction Era. The introduction describes Hamlin Beach as a quiet residential and farming community along the Hamlin Sound, existing under a canopy of oak trees, where many generations of extended family continue to live near each other. Here is a map of the proposed historic district boundaries identified by the community. This plat from 1881 shows how lots in the area were subdivided and sold off from Contentment Cottage Plantation. This application to designate the Hamlin Beach Community as a historic district received 248 total support signatures, 215 out of the total 349 registered voters within the proposed district boundaries signed in support of the designation. Additionally, eight individuals that were no longer active registered voters, and another 25 who were not registered within the proposed district boundaries also signed in support of the designation. So that translates to 61.6% of the registered voters within the proposed district boundaries expressing their support for this application. Please note that this application type requires a minimum of 51% of the registered voters to sign in support. Here is a more in-depth breakdown of some of the numbers. So the proposed district includes 280 parcels covering a total of 292.9 acres. Within that area, there are 349 registered voters, 61.6 of whom signed in support of this application. Those signatures represent 38.6% of the total number of parcels within the proposed district The proposed Hamlin Beach Community Historic District is located about a half-mile southeast of Highway 17 North in the East Cooper area. The main access roads into the community are Hamlin Road and Rifle Range Road. Other primary thoroughfares, including Atlanta Drive, Boston Grill Road, and Hamlin Beach Road, allow for internal circulation within the community. Zoning in the proposed district is primarily S3, with most properties containing manufactured housing units or single-family dwelling units. 21 properties are within the residential area of the Mount Pleasant Overlay Zoning District, Sweetgrass Basket Stand Special Consideration Area, and contain manufactured housing units, single-family dwelling units, or are undeveloped. Five properties are zoned AG10 and contain manufactured housing units, single-family dwelling units, or are also undeveloped. Three properties within the proposed district are zoned R4 and contain single-family dwelling units. One property is zoned RC and contains a satellite parking location for a landscaping company. The area is bounded by the Hamlin Sound to the southeast and Hamlin Farms to the southwest, zoned AG10. To the northeast and northwest, the proposed historic district is surrounded by the town of Mount Pleasant. These areas are zoned either planned development, low-density residential, and community conservation, and contain residential development or are undeveloped. Here is the future land use map for the area, showing the majority of properties within the urban-suburban cultural community protection classification. Here is an aerial view of the proposed district. And lastly, this map shows the current FEMA flood zones within the community, which range from shaded X to VE. Here are the six approval criteria the applicant believes have been met. Please note, this application's only required to meet one of the approval criteria. In response to approval criteria one, two, four, and 10, the applicant outlines how the area came into African-American ownership in 1881 after former plantation land was subdivided into 30 10-acre lots. They also describe the tradition of weaving sweetgrass baskets as both an art form and a means of income, and highlight the prominent role that women played in this trade. The applicant also explains how Hurricane Hugo wreak havoc on the community, demolishing many homes. And lastly, the applicant notes that two U.S. Navy ships, named after the Hamlin Sound, were active during World War II. In response to approval criteria three, four, and nine, the applicant describes Hamlin Beach as a community of Gullah-speaking Geechee living people, whose descendants were taken from West Africa and brought to South Carolina during the slave trade. Important skills were noted as seafood and shellfish harvesting, boat and net making, sweetgrass basket weaving, and farming. The applicant describes how the Hamlin Sound, which was known as the Crick, has played an important economic and cultural role over the past 300 years. Additionally, the important role that religion plays in the community is also described. The achievements of several notable Hamlin Beach residents are also outlined, including Ike Coakley, known as the Oyster Man, Julius Howard, known as the Fish Hawk, Mary Jane Manago, William Manago, Patty Manago, Henry Seabrook, Joe Johnson, John Bennett, Reverend Victoria Washington, and Sam Coakley. Next, we're going to briefly discuss roadways within the community. So this slide shows a breakdown of the rights of way within the proposed historic district. Please note, the applicant has chosen to include all of the county and private rights of way within this designation request. And here are photos of a sampling of properties within the proposed historic district, along with some beautiful views of the Hamlin Sound from roads within the community. So now we're going to move on to an overview of the proposed contributing resources that were identified by the community. Just a reminder, contributing resource is defined in our ordinance as a building, object, site, or structure in a historic district or on a historic property that contribute to the district or property's historical significance through location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, and association. Here's a map showing the location of the proposed contributing resources within the identified district boundaries. The following were identified as contributing resources, 1495 Boston Grill Road, 2713 Callan Road, Benjamin Sweet Shop, cow shelter and pasture with wire and tin fencing, Deliverance Tabernacle, God's Way Healing and Worship Center, the large live oak at Manago Corner, the Meeting House, also known as Coakley Chapel, Mercury Lane, old-fashioned farm fencing, and the William Hamlin Cemetery. The following are community landmarks that were described in the application but do not meet the definition of contributing resources. The following are community landmarks that were described in the application but do not meet the definition of contributing resources found in our ordinance. Those include Hamlin Farms, Hamlin Sound, Johnson's Candy Store, and Mrs. Mary Jane Manago's property. Since the approval criteria appear to have been met, staff recommends approval of the historic district designation request, along with the 11 contributing resources listed on this slide. The Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval of staff's recommendation. We did receive some public input. So prior to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, one petition with 26 signatures in support, as well as three letters and one online comment in support, were received. We also received one voicemail in opposition to the request. During the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, seven individuals spoke in support of the request. A petition with 179 signatures in support of the request was submitted. And a representative for an individual with a contract on two parcels within the proposed district boundaries spoke in opposition to the request. Twenty-two comments in support, along with three in opposition, and three general comments were received prior to tonight's public hearing. We did notice this meeting as required. Thank you. One thing to note is that in their application, the community is requesting that the subdivision moratorium apply to this district if it were to be designated.
Thank you, Emily.
All right, we have the first person to speak is Anthony Bryant, followed by Kennedy Bennett.
I definitely support this effort completely. But I'm here on another reason. I spoke before. I couldn't spoke before this board. I met with the, this is my name, Anthony G. Bryant, 2123 Cortlandt Avenue, House of Lot 29403. I went to North Charleston. It's about my name. And I saw the South Carolina Attorney General and the solicitor for Charleston and Brooklyn County. And I, you can't FOIA them. So my name's on this other side, here, right? So I want to make sure they understand clearly that there's no FOIA for victims advocacy program or activity. So my name is in that. Anthony G. Bryant's name is in that because I won't redact anything with my name. My name is my name. My mama gave me that. Betty gave me that. Not the sheriff, the attorney general, whoever. But the history behind this community is based upon somebody saying you was a slave. You were a human being for hundreds of years, and somebody told you over and over and over again, you're nothing. And that persists to this very day. This very day, this community represents that, resiliency. Mr. Johnson, Bishop Johnson, 101 years old, veteran, served his country, did the right thing, successful business, he comes from this whole thing too. So at the end of the day, I thank this council for giving me the opportunity to be here. And hearing me, we appropriate these people. We're not responsible for their ineptitude, and you're not responsible for them not dealing with the equal protection due process clause. If you getting victims advocacy money, $100 million from 2008 to 2024, and you can FOIA them. But you see, people who look like me from this community lined up going to prison.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Kennedy Bennett, and then Amanda Nester.
Good evening. My name is Kennedy Bennett, and I'm speaking in support of the historic designation of the Hamlin Beach Community. As the Energy and Climate Project Manager at the Coastal Conservation League, I advocate to protect our natural resources and coastal landscapes. I grew up in Hamlin, where my mother and grandmother used natural resources to create sweetgrass baskets. One of the many ways to understand Hamlin's historical significance is through sweetgrass basket-making, a tradition that has been at the heart of this community for generations. As a history major at Yale, I wrote my senior thesis on the history of sweetgrass basketry in Hamlin. Sweetgrass baskets are a hallmark of Gullah-Geechee culture and date back to the 17th century. Enslaved West Africans applied their basketry skills on plantations, including Boone Hall and Copahoe Plantation, now Hamlin Farms. These early baskets, constructed mostly of boll rush, were a utilitarian tool to win o' rice. By the 20th century, Jim Crow restricted jobs to sweetgrass basketry, agriculture, and domestic work for Hamlin residents. Basket makers created show baskets to sell to tourists and locals. These were decorative styles, such as bread baskets to hold food, and traveling headpieces like a hat. Basket makers collected sweetgrass around Hamlin Beach and longleaf pine around Hamlin Farms, then sold finished baskets at their roadside basket stands. Since the 1970s, and especially after Hurricane Hugo, Hamlin's basket-making community has faced severe challenges: loss of ancestral lands, restricted access to natural resources, and economic disruptions to their basket stands. Designating Hamlin as a historic district will protect this legacy from development threats, safeguarding the land and resources that sustain this vital cultural tradition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Amanda Nester, Richard Haversham.
Amanda Nester, Historic Charleston Foundation. HCF fully supports the Hamlin community and this request for historic district designation. The residents of this historic settlement community have rallied to protect the area from insensitive development. Their work is outstanding and admirable. They have clearly identified criteria that prove the significance of the proposed district. The historic district designation will allow the Hamlin community to continue to preserve and promote the stories of their ancestors who established Hamlin, built on the land, and maintain the culture without fear of development. We believe establishing this historic district will not only protect the physical area, it will also protect stories, traditions, and resilience that defines Hamlin. Thank you.
Richard Haversham, Sam Spence.
Good evening. My name is Richard Haversham. I live at 2938 Bennett Charles Road. I know, you know, Phillips was the first one to become a historic district, but it's not for us to be bragging about that because we always said it was other communities, just like ours, got rich history, got a story to tell. They got, you know, the people are still here. I got in trouble one time, told a reporter that, you know, I don't want to be in a museum. You know, because when you see somebody in a museum, everything is gone. So Hamlin is here. They're still here. The people is here. And a lot of people don't realize, my family is tied to Hamlin too. You know, so, so it's, when you got that, got that connectedness between the communities, this is something that you really need to protect. You know, you protect not just the land, you protecting the people. And you come in, you come in Mount Pleasant, you know, everybody talk about affordable housing and all this stuff, but it's, it's not there. We get the affordable housing because of these communities and these family members. These families who've been here, that own these properties, that their generation and their kids can still be here and understand what Mount Pleasant used to be. And on that, I'll thank you, and I hope, and you should, to designate the Hamlin community as a historical zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Spence, Myra Snipe Richardson.
Hello, counsel. I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society. The Preservation Society is supportive of the Hamlin Community for Historic District Designation by Charleston County. Like many historic settlement communities east of the Cooper, Hamlin faces growing development pressure that could be moderated by the protections afforded by historic districts. We applaud the Hamlin residents for spearheading this effort and to county staff for assisting in the process. This district designation is a direct follow-up from the county's 2016 Cultural Resources Survey, which recommended methods of protecting cultural, traditional cultural places, including unincorporated settlement communities. And as Emily's presentation showed, it's consistent with the intent of the future land use designation for this area. And all the discussion we've heard over the past year has shown the county's continued commitment to that follow-up, so thank you for that. And I appreciate your consideration of this, but I'll leave you with one short anecdote. As the Phillips community, which Mr. Haversham just mentioned, was in initial conversations in 2010 with state preservationists about national registered designation, a State Department of Archives and History Architectural Historian told Mr. Haversham in a letter, and this is in 2010, 13 years before the registered designation, that the significance of Phillips as a continuing Gullah community is made stronger when considered along with other traditionally rural Gullah communities in Mount Pleasant, including Scanlinville, Snoudon, Green Hill, and Hamlin. And that significance stands today in Phillips as it does in Hamlin. So thank you.
Myra Snipe Richardson, Cassandra Davis.
Good day. My name is Myra Snipe Richardson. I'm the president of the Hamlin Beach Community. I live at 2755 Earl Johnson Lane. I would like to thank the Hamlin Beach Community for their hard work, their dedication to protect, preserve our rich history and culture. And under the threat of being overrun and overdeveloped, we came together once again to protect our community. We're asking to be historically preserved because we're not going to be fighting developers one by one. We want to be under an umbrella of protection that we have some sense of knowing what's coming into our community. When you leave home early in the morning to go to work, and you come home and there's markings all over your property with a surveyor that entered your property without even consulting you, and a development is coming beside you that's trying to change the zoning. We don't want to have to fight those issues anymore. We want to be able to be protected. We thank the Hamlin community. We thank the Phillips community, the Tamal community for all their support. And we just wanted to protect this private little jewel that we have. As I traveled through the community obtaining the signatures we needed, it was like being a tourist in my own little private community, to view the beautiful scenery that we want to protect. We see the birds flying around. We see the birds in the creek. It's just a beautiful community, and that's what we want to protect and preserve. So we're asking today, and we thank Charleston County, we thank the staff for all the hard work and dedication that they gave us and support for us to be at this point. So thank you again, and we appreciate it, and please vote yes to protecting and preserving one more historically Black community in Charleston County. Thank you.
Cassandra Davis.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassandra Davis. My address is 1148 Huro Road, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I am a native of the Hamlin Beach community, although I live in another settlement community, which is called Seven Mile. I am here to speak on behalf of my family and on behalf of all of our community members and stand in agreement that we would love to have our community recognized as a historic district. I would like to bring a couple of things to the attention of everyone here, not to spark debate, but also just to sit and allow us to simmer on the information that I am about to give. We do not want to be a road sign with an arrow that says, "Here is," "There was," and then everybody just gets in their car and say, "I just want to go and see this place where they used to be." I'm reminded of the Boone Hall Plantation signs when I drive and I go to get on 526, or the Pinkley Plantation where I had my engagement pictures taken and held up a sweetgrass basket that sat on the fireplace at the old Pinkley Plantation house. And I begin to smile. And I think about our people and our heritage that we are trying to protect and preserve. I know I only have two minutes, but I'm going to do my best to stay within that timeframe. On this week Friday, February, June, the 21st, 2024, we will celebrate National Indigenous People Day. It's kind of sad that we can't find a house, a yard, or a creek where our fellow Americans used to live. But we can find a plantation where they were held. And like I said, it is not to spark debate or cause an issue in the room, but it is brought to our attention so that we can understand the importance of protecting history, the protection of a people. In the Low Country, there were several Native Americans that were listed. In Christ Church Parish, South Carolina, the primary indigenous group historically present were the Seewee Indians, other nearby tribes that may have interacted with the parish, including the Wando, Itewa, and Yemecii people, all considered part of the larger coastal Carolina Indian group. The Seewee were the most prominent indigenous people group in the area where Christ Church Parish was established. Many places named in the Mount Pleasant area, which were a part of the former Christ Church Parish, are derived from the Seewee and other local indigenous people. See? We are a people. Thank you. We are a people, the Gullah people. We are a subgroup of the African-American ethnic group who predominantly live in the Low Country region of the United States, of South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, within the coastal plain and the sea islands. Their language and culture are preserved, are preserve a significant influence of Africanism as a result of their historical geographic isolation and the community's relation to shared history and a Gullah and identity. We are the Gullah-Geechee people, and protecting Hamlin Beach community will be one of the most remarkable feats to protect and preserve the Gullah-Geechee people. Thank you.
That's all that signed up.
Next one, amend the Charleston Colleton Multi-County Industrial Park to add new parcels.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing beginning at 5:00 PM on Thursday, November 21st, prior to final approval by the Council of An Ordnance to further amend the agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina.
We have one speaker signed up, Anthony G. Bryant.
Chair, can you just reiterate the two-minute?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I know Mr. Bryant's well aware of it.
Still reiterate it.
We do have a two-minute rule, and when you speak longer than that, you may be keeping other people from speaking.
We had no, we had no time limit. You just love, you got to love to sit here. You got to love it. You got to love to hear other people.
All right, Mr. Bryant, you're starting right now.
You got to love to hear people. All right. And just Anthony G. Bryant, appointed by Tim Scott, right? Tim Scott is basically my appointee. I was appointed three times. Tim Scott says he doesn't know domestic abuser, somebody on and offline, you know, with children. So he don't know me. So let's talk economic development, and also, they don't know me either. So let's talk about economic development for a second. Dyke's got my card. Now, you approved a tough district, right, to impact the downtown Charleston where I live and reside, and live now, not yesterday. And so if you concerned about existing residents, for those who voted on the prevailing side, you have to come back to the table because South Carolina Department of Commerce, the head president and CEO of Railways, got an investigation on it. So did Mr. Cogswell tell you, tell you about that? Did you fully disclose to the public too that Mr. Cogswell, the head of the county, the DSS building? That wasn't fully disclosed, right? So, we didn't get full disclosure in terms of relationships people have with each other. So, I'm keeping an eye on about these economic development projects. You, you were the chairman during that period of time from 15 on in, and people, and some soft costs probably involved. People are upset about something. But if you proceed with what you doing, the public says they don't want something, it look like something else. Now, I know I'm executive, I was a deputy committee with the Republican Party, and they told me, this is what they were saying about me, that the Republican Party told me, the Democrats and Republicans said Anthony G. Bryant backbeated women and did whatever. I'm here right now. I love, I love listening to people. I love listening to the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
That's it?
That's it? Okay, next one.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing prior to final action being taken to convey the real property located at 1912 Morgan Avenue, North Charleston, South Carolina, to International Abba Ministries.
We don't have anybody signed up for that one?
Okay, thank you. Next one?
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance to authorize a utility easement to the commissioners of public works of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, on a portion of the county property located at 4350 Azalea Drive.
And the set is what it's about. Separation of church and state is very important because they tend to like to list here themselves in most cases and give long soliloquies when it's unnecessary. This is a government agency, not a church. So, at the end of the day, what we're talking about right now is EPA. We've got issues with lead all over the country. The water company have to charge more money for poor people to clean up pipes. Charleston Water System is catching the dickens with charging us more money along with SCNG, well, they all in jail too, not VC summon and all that, they were in jail too. Who didn't go to jail? But the people got to pay for that. The existing residents of this state and country are overpaying. Look at Boeing right now. Boeing letting go 20 people. You gonna, you gonna, Mr. Dice want to penalize Boeing for not finding these people in lieu of taxes you got? You got 19% increase in rate increases, 30% increase in rent mortgages around the country? Yeah, I told somebody Trump why because of bacon and eggs, not because of being a fascist. So, at the end of the day, I'm here for that reason. You got to be here, you got to love being here to listen to people. I serve in the BZA beneath two, three hours at night, no two minutes, no nothing, because we love to hear from people.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
And Mr. Bryant, you signed up for public comments as well?
Okay, public comments. Mr. Bryant?
Anthony G. Bryant was appointed by Tim Scott. Nancy Mace and Tim Scott go to the same church. Nancy Mace claims that she was violated under domestic violence policies. What if she wrong about that? That's Scottsboro Boys, and that's George Tenny, that's electric chair. The governor has issued out the electric chair like man. What is, what is the cause of you, if you're a white woman on this council and Tim Scott say Tony Bryant go violate you and your daughter, what you gonna do about that? He gonna defend the honor of his woman. He gonna find a tree, he gonna find a rope, and he gonna find me. But I ain't gonna go willingly. I ain't gonna go willingly when a Black man got that kind of power and he mess in it and deny a person he's known for 20 years and tell white people he's an animal. And I'm gonna be senator, I'm gonna be big time, and no Black votes. He gonna sit down with Donald Trump and tell Donald Trump and any other Black man, if a white woman feel threatened by a Black man, hang him. That's what we dealing with right now? That's what Tim Scott said about me. He appointed me, put me right there. And the attorney general said it's DSS, it's the Department of Corrections, and the secretary say, "You're a criminal of business, you're simply a criminal, and you a criminal, and you have no FOIA request to get any relief from." How you can be a Black man in America right now and let a Black woman be threatened like that? Get her, put a red dress on her, let her be exotic. He will vote for them then. She got, she got, she got a degree in college, HPCU graduate, and she'd have heard like she's a stripper in DC. That's what's going on right now. Tell Tim Scott, "I'm on Colton Avenue, fingers broken tree."
We are number four, third reading ordinances, number 4A, Azalea Water Easement, transfer to the commission of public works to the City of Charleston, third reading.
Ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to the commissioners of public works of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, on portions of county properties identified as tax map parcel number 411130004, located at 4350 Azalea Drive, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski is absent. Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Next one. Amend the Charleston Colleton Multi-County Industrial Park to add new parcels, third reading.
An ordinance to further amend the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park by and between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park so as to include additional property in Charleston County as part of the joint county industrial park, and to update the status of certain properties in Charleston County with respect to the joint county industrial park. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Second reading ordinances, financial incentives for Project Aloha, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and an entity currently known to the county as Project Aloha, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with Project Aloha, providing for payment by the Project Aloha of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Okay, 5B, financial incentives for Project Tree?
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among Charleston County and two companies known to the county and identified collectively for the time being as Project Tree, whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the companies, providing for payment by the companies of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park and other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Okay, amendment to Green Belt Ordinance 1424, second reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7.5, Article 4 of the Charleston County Code of Ordinances, the Charleston County Green Belt Bank Ordinance, number 1424 as amended. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski's absent. Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Chairman, move for committee recommendation, A and B.
Second. Moved and seconded for 6A and 6B. Any discussion on either one of these? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at 3555 Bo Hicket Road, parcel identification number 215000014, from the agricultural residential AGR zoning district to the rural agricultural AG8 zoning district. And an ordinance rezoning the real property located at 2550 and 2554 Bo Hicket Road, parcel identification number 257000033, from the agricultural residential AGR zoning district to the rural agricultural AG8 zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to approve 7A through D.
Second. Moved and, moved and seconded to approve 7A through D. Any discussion or question on these? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Number 8.
8A through D.
Number 8A through?
D.
Through D, okay. Moved and seconded for 8A through 8D. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Counsel comments? Reverend Middleton?
Nothing tonight. Thank you so much.
Mr. Moody?
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
I was going to say that. Thank you. Nothing tonight, Mr. SASS.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir. I just hope that we, as a body, really take seriously the preservation of these historic communities because they're being carved up as if they are turkey on Thanksgiving, and they're just being eviscerated from where we used to be. As a little boy, even growing up on Rivers Avenue where Trident Tech is, that was once a prominent African-American community. The only thing that stands in that community now is Mount Mariah Church. That's it. That was an African-American community. You go to Midtown, you widen road, the entire community, gone. Reed Hill, West Montague, gone. Central Hill, gone, where the, where the performance art and the Coliseum. They're on top of Black graves, gone, because we don't preserve these lands. And if we don't, it's going to be gone. Liberty Hill on the brink of being gone. So, I hope that this body takes seriously the preservation of these communities because before too long, people going to think that it's normal just to have these communities gone. So, please, let us consider the preservation of historic communities.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Warman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I'd agree with everything Mr. Darby said. I just, you know, also keep Mr. Kabrowski and his family in our thoughts and prayers.
Amen.
Mr. Pryor?
Get those are what Mr. Warman said.
Mr. Boykin?
Same here and nothing else.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Yep, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Nysley? Mr. Tigten?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank everyone. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and certainly our thoughts are with Mr. Kabrowski's family. Thank you all very much. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move.
So, move. Thank you.